You are listening to Asheville FM at WSFM LP 103.3 Asheville. Coming up next is Radioactive Kids. Radioactive Kids broadcasts from the occupied lands of the Chalaki people, also known as the Cherokee.
(music) Good morning, good good morning. Watch the sun, watch it rise with a smile, open eyes, say good morning, every morning. What a wonderful way to greet each new day. Say good morning, good morning to you. Good good morning, good good morning. Brush the hair on your head, brush your teeth, make your bed. Look at each day in a new way. Take a chance, you can be what you wanna be, 'cause this morning is waiting, you'll see. If it's Monday...
Good morning!
Tuesday, Wednesday...
Good morning!
Thursday, Friday...
Good morning!
Saturday, Sunday, good morning, good morning, good morning to each one of you. Good good morning, good good morning. Have a pancake or two, pack your lunch off to school, kiss your mommy and your daddy. What a wonderful way to greet each new day. Say good morning, good morning to you. If it's Monday...
Good morning!
Tuesday, Wednesday...
Good morning!
Thursday, Friday...
Good morning!
Saturday, Sunday, good morning, good morning, good morning to each one of you. Good good morning, good good morning. Watch the sun in the sky with a smile, watch it rise, say good morning, every morning. What a wonderful way to greet each new day. Good good morning, good morning to you. Good good morning, brush the hair on your head, brush your teeth, make your bed. Look at each day in a new way. Take a chance, you can be what you wanna be, 'cause this morning is waiting, you'll see.
Good, good morning! This is, whoa, what's happening? Hang on, it's like cutting off, that's weird. Whoa, hang on, this is weird. Uh-oh. Okay. Am I doing something? Okay, okay, okay. Okay, hello folks, it's live radio. We don't know wha- what's happening these days. Anyway, this is Radioactive Kids. Welcome to the show, I am Sagan. Hopefully that does not happen again, because I might have to figure something else out to play you music if it does. But, this is Radioactive Kids, and welcome to the show. We just heard the entirety of our theme song, which I rarely get through, the whole, um, uh, theme song, but I figured I should play it today. So, so y'all, um, I was not planning to do a random Active Kids show today, but, um, I have had a really, really, really rough week, because a close comrade of mine, uh, passed away unexpectedly last weekend, and I have not had the capacity to put together a Radioactive Kids episode. But, I also know that I really like being on the radio live, and it's really like helpful for me, so I was like, you know what? I'm just gonna go in, I don't have any idea what I'm gonna play, and I'm just gonna do it. So, we're gonna have a show. And I have, I decided I'm gonna play at least two, uh, full albums and a bunch of other just randomness. So, get ready, it's gonna be a good show. Let's start off with a song by Key Wild and Dean Jones. The song is called "Things I Can Never Remember." Stay tuned y'all, we got a lot of good stuff, coming right up.
Things I can never remember. Things that I always forget. Things that happened a long time ago. Things that ain't happened yet. I was looking around for that thingamajig. Looks like a widget that is not that big. Went in my room, he closed the door, and I forgot what I went in there for. Went back out, the doorbell rang, I answered the door, and there was what's-her-name. I know I've seen her around someplace, she hangs around with what's's face. Don't remember what she actually wanted at that particular point in time. I think she was selling Girl Scout cookies or something like that, I don't recall.
Things that I never remember. Things that I always forget. Things that happened a long time ago. Things that ain't happened yet.
Hey, I went to that place we used to go. They still do that thing with the stuff, you know? Doesn't ring a bell? For sure you'll recall, we went there in the summer, or was it the fall? Maybe I was with my other friend. I bet you would like him, or her, or them. Which friend was it? Oh, I'm getting kinda blurry. Ooh, taste this, this is good curry. Wha- what was I, who was I talking about? It'll come back to me, no doubt. Oh, we should get going, it's getting kinda late. I can't remember the last time I ate. Oh, yeah, oh yeah, the curry, that's right, that's right. Hey, you're looking at me kinda funny. Is everything alright? Got some in my teeth?
Things I can never remember. Things that I always forget. Things that happened a long time ago. Things that ain't happened yet.
What'd you say your name was?
There's a brand-new dance all across the land. You've got to learn it if you can. You wanna know how? I'm telling you now. Wave your arms around. Now scratch your head. And jump around on the bed. Super Spunky Funky Monkey. Super Spunky Funky Monkey. Super Spunky Funky Monkey. Super Spunky. A family of monkeys invented this dance. Jumping on a divan. They lived in France. A monkey did fall. The doctor was called. Had the doctors come, and the dance was banned across the land.
You must have.
When you bend the band, the fad extends. Super Spunky Funky Monkey. Super Spunky Funky Monkey. Super Spunky Funky Monkey. Super Spunky. So don't be slow. Bands come and go. Show everyone you're in the know. Monkey see, monkey do. You know that you can learn it too. Wave your arms around. Now scratch your head. And jump around on the bed. Super Spunky Funky Monkey. Super Spunky Funky Monkey. Super Spunky Funky Monkey. Super Spunky. You may remember Macarena. The locomotion and the twist. The puppet jerk and the hustle. They were nothing like... Super Spunky Funky Monkey. 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 Super Spunky Funky Monkey.
The bear traded fur with the fox. The fox traded fur with the beaver. The beaver thought the bear coat made him a bad. So he went and traded fur with the otter. The otter traded fur with the marten. The marten traded fur with the mink. The mink didn't care for the bear coat at all. So the mink traded fur with the fisher. It's the fur trade. F-f-f-f-f-f-fur.
Fur, fur, fur!
Yeah, the fur trade. The fisher traded with the chipmunk. The chipmunk traded with the raccoon. The raccoon thought the bear coat flashed with his eyes. So he then traded fur with the rabbit. The rabbit traded fur with the muskrat. The muskrat traded fur with the deer. The deer liked the coat, but he broke out in hives. So the deer traded fur with the bear. It's the fur trade. F-f-f-f-f-f-fur.
Fur, fur, fur!
Yeah, the fur trade. Wow! It's the fur trade. F-f-f-f-f-f-fur.
Fur, fur, fur!
Yeah, the fur trade.
Here's a song about a dog named Nicky. Got tired of hanging around in the backyard. So he learned how to walk around on his back two legs. It wasn't really that hard. He drove the family car to buy a rocket car. Learned how to rock and roll watching heavy metal videos. You can be who you are. Stand around or catch a star. You can cry, be above on a log. Or you can stand up and walk the dog. He tried out for a local band. They didn't seem to understand just how a dog could play. He whipped out his guitar, paws on the webby bar. And this is what he had to say. You can be who you are. Stand around or catch a star. You can cry, be above on a log. Or you can stand up and walk the dog. Some dogs walk alone to a beat that's all their own. They just don't seem to know how they're supposed to be. Some people think they're strange and try to make 'em change. Being something that you're not seems kinda weird to me. Back to Nick and the scene before. He made the band and they went on tour. The people all stand up and shout bow wow, bow wow. They have their own webpage for hounds who crave the stage. Your boots can't be the bomb that teach your dog to rock, Doc, come. You can be who you are. Stand around or catch a star. You can cry, be above on a log. Or you can stand up and walk the dog. Being something that you're not seems kinda, kinda weird to me. We all live in a little bitty town, and everybody knows. We do everything the same, we like the way it goes. We wear the same clothes every day, get where we're going the same way. There isn't really much to say, it always sounds the same. All the guys are named Bob, they work at the same job. They make those little knobs, sticking corn on the cob. All the girls are named Sue, they work the factory too. Making super glue and green shampoo. We all live in a little bitty town, and everybody knows. We do everything the same, we like the way it goes. Just over the hill is a place that we call Weirdoville. All of us here think those people really stink. You should see their funky hair, they ride bicycles everywhere. It's like they don't even care that they're kinda strange. They are where we're close and all have ugly toes. Why do you suppose they have that funny nose? We don't like the way they talk and the words they say. We voted today to make them go away. We all live in a little bitty town, and everybody knows. We do everything the same, we like the way it goes. We sent them a card we bought, said it's time to go. They wrote back things for the thought, but I really don't think so. I believe we were here first, and your whole stupid town is cursed. You all smell like liverwurst, and you're all the same. So we headed to the town to make them pay. Well, I guess they had the same idea, they met us on the way. Both sides of the insults fly, someone hit Bob in the eye. Lightning flashed across the sky, ee-ay, and it started to rain. Well, the rain poured down, and we fought in the mud until we couldn't see who was fighting for our side and who was the enemy. Then we heard a crashing sound, and the damn upstream came crumbling down. We all thought we'd surely drown, as we were swept away. Luckily, that night, the kids had heard the fight. They tied a rope to the school bus, and lassoed all of us. They said you should be ashamed, yelling at us for calling names. The world would be so lame if we were all the same. We all live in a little bigger town, now everybody knows. None of us are quite the same, 'cause that's the way it goes. Most of the time, we disagree on everything we hear and see. But we shut our mouths and let it be, because we're not the same.
Born in the springtime under a eucalyptus tree. Her family's standing by to witness history. Calmly they came to greet the new addition. Her father finally filled her in on the family tradition. He said, "Most of what we do..." "Most of what we do..." "Most of what we do is sleep."
Dear little cub, tell me, do you know that your dazzling stripes will stay with you and they will grow? Oh, the beauty of India reflected in those lines. Hush little kitten, I see the sleep is in your eyes. Because most of what we do... "Most of what we do..." "Most of what we do is sleep."
He is just like all the others, though he isn't quite the same. Like his sisters and his brothers. He will answer to a name. He lets out a cry before the dawning light. His father holds him close and whispers this throughout the night.
"Most of what we do..." "Most of what we do..." "Most of what we do is sleep." "Most of what we do..." "Most of what we do..." "Most of what we do is sleep." "Sleep."
Ah, I love that song so much! That was "Most Of What We Do Is Sleep" by The Relative Miners. That is the title track from their latest album. Before that, we heard two songs by Pencilhead and the Playground Punks from their album Punk Salad. We heard Same and Nick. Before that, we heard a song by Hip Camarade and Friends from the album A Curious Glimpse of Michigan called "The Fur Trade"? And we heard two songs by Key Wild and Dean Jones. We heard Super Spunky Funky Monkey and "Things I Can Never Remember" on Radioactive Kids. I am Sagan, this is Radioactive Kids. My pronouns are they, them, theirs. I hope you're enjoying the show so far. As I mentioned at the top of the show, I'm just doing whatever I want on today's show, because I don't really care, and it's my show. So I'm just playing a bunch of stuff that I wanna hear. And what I wanna hear right now is I wanna hear a full album. We've played several songs from the album before on the show, we've never played the full album. This is, uh, an album by a band called The Board of Education. It's called "Binary," and it is pretty darn good. This song that we're gonna start with is quite possibly the only song about, uh, about the former Soviet Union for kids, released in the past fifteen years. And it's really good, and it rocks! So, get ready to hear a very nerdy and fun album by The Board of Education. The song is called "Welcome Back: Geography Quiz" on Radioactive Kids.
We are the Board of Education, and welcome to our second album. It's time for the show. Yeah, we took a long time to make it. We hope you kinda like it. And if you have a favorite song, let us know. Are you ready? 'Cause here we come. It used to be that a map of the world was so much less complicated, 'cause most of Eastern Europe was part of the USSR. A giant blob of red with only one name. It was so very convenient, till the Bolavasza Accords and the Alma Auto Protocol came along. Now the people on the Baltic and down by the Black Sea, among the Caspian who yearn for their own identity, with a dose of Glasnost and a bad economy, they got their wish, now you have to know. Azerbaijan and Armenia, Turkmenistan and Kazakhstan, Georgia and Belarus. Don't forget Kyrgyzstan and Moldova too. Estonia and Lithuania, Uzbekistan and Tajikistan. Oh, Latvia and the Ukraine too. Is fourteen and all, is that enough for you?
Geography Quiz, everybody! Which former SSR is farthest north? Which former SSR is largest by area? Which former SSR's capital is Oskavara? And why do they speak Ukrainian?
Now the people on the Baltic and down by the Black Sea, and along the Caspian who yearn for their own identity, they got their own borders and they got their own flags. The only problems you have to know. Azerbaijan and Armenia, Turkmenistan and Kazakhstan, Georgia and Belarus. Don't forget Kyrgyzstan and Moldova too. Estonia and Lithuania, Uzbekistan and Tajikistan. Oh, Latvia and the Ukraine too. Is fourteen and all, is that enough for you? Alright! You're taking a job and a money. Now when you fall, sorry! You and me, cross our wrists and grasp each other's hands and spin, creating a new center. A mass that holds us to each other, binary. Superforce, momentum from the center of the universe. The happy chance of similar locations and relations. When it began in a dining hall. Everyone observed the difference. The fluctuation of emissions. The wobble on our axes. Someday I might get all red, supergiant and lose all my energy. But you'll be there to grab it and to shine bigger still. Until you're a supergiant too. Then you'll give it back to me. Round and round we go. Binary. Binary. You and me are binary. Though despite your help, I might become a white dwarf. So your return of energy will cause me to go supernova. Which will likely destroy us both. But you just shrug and say that's how it's always been with me. You and me, wound up in each other's tug of gravity. We're spun into a backyard circle, binary. Here we are together, spinning, wobbly. Never to leave each other, holding hands, spinning faster. Making something stronger, something more than one. Delighting eyes across the skies, we're binary. Luke, Leia, Chewie, and Han. R2, 3PO, Lando, and Obi-Wan. The whole family gathers round when the trilogy is on. But once the movie starts, I can hear my mom and dad start to groan. First it's the Dubax, and by the cantina, they've left the room. And I wonder why it's so bad that Greedo shoots first at hand. Why does Dad get so mad about Star Wars? Mister Lucas, what did you do? He's always so excited when those yellow words come on. But by the end, he's angry about the new Ewok song, and that Anakin guy too. And so, lately, I've been spending lots of time at my best friends. I say we're playing games, but secretly, we're watching the prequels. I wish I could tell my dad that Episode 1 really isn't that bad. But he'd just start freaking out about Jar Jar and the whole underwater thing. And I wonder what could be so wrong with little mini-quarions. Why does Dad get so mad about Star Wars? Mister Lucas, what did you do? He hates hating Christians, and thinks Yoda should be a puppet. It's R2's jet, Rocket Pack, Jango Fett, Al Dooku. On and on, and on, and on, and on, and on. Well Dad, I wish you could understand. There's still good in the prequels and special editions. I feel it. But Dad says, "You don't know the power of the dark side of George Lucas." It's too late for me, son. It's too late for me, son. It's too late for me, son. Whoa, why does Dad get so mad about Star Wars? Mister Lucas, what did you do? Even Mom starts crumbling at that final part. She says it's completely lame that Padme would die of a broken heart. I guess I'll watch something else. First day in this new place, all these new faces and rules. You say that this is good for me, but I don't know. How can you be so cruel? And send me off to school? I tell ya, I don't wanna go, and you say you know. But you walk me to my table spot, and tell me you have to go. Put on your name tag, draw a picture, it'll be fine. So I try to be your little hero, I try not to cry. Ooh, don't you think it's cool to leave me here at school? Well maybe, the teacher's kinda nice. And maybe there's some friendly-looking faces at circle time. But recess is a blur of whirling, screaming strangers. And I don't know what to do without you. Do you remember all those days that we spent? Claiming my room, and taking trips to the zoo. Eating our lunch out in the backyard. And riding on shoulders as we walked to the park. Maybe the school thing would be okay if nothing else had to change. Well maybe, music class was nice. And maybe I liked words and numbers more than I realized. But lunch is kinda awkward, and there's no best time. The day just goes on and on. On and on. Friday afternoon, I finally made it. And there you are, outside the door, taking my hand. On our way down to the park, you ask me how it was. I have to say, it was kinda fun, but I'm glad I'm all done. Wait, what do you mean? I have to go back Monday? Lying in my room, looking out at the stars, and getting mad all over again. The solid rocket boosters are too heavy and too slow. It'll take too long, I'll never get where I'm dreaming to go. So tell me, Vazimir, are you gonna get me to Mars? Vazimir, I wanna travel like the shooting stars. 'Cause everybody knows that plasma is the way to go. There's so many dangers, out there in that big black world. On a two-year trip, there's galactic cosmic radiation and light speed, space rocks. And all that time in zero-gravity causes bone-density loss. That's why you need a variable, specific impulse magnetoplasma rocket. The plasma's made from ionized hydrogen. It's two times as hot as the sun. Then it shot through a tube of magnets for 100,000 miles per hour of fun. Yeah, that's the Vazimir. Are you gonna get me to Mars? Vazimir, I wanna travel like the shooting stars. 'Cause everybody knows that plasma is the way to go. And once we get to Mars, I know what you'll be thinking. Let's stop for water on Titan. On our way to gleese 581B. It's 22 million light-years away. But with Vazimir, we'll make it in no time. So, I wanna travel like the shooting stars. 'Cause everybody knows that plasma is the way to go. You gotta take me there. You're the only one who can. That was a song by The Board of Education about an experimental rocket powering procedure that might be in development still. That song was called "Vazimir: To Mars", from their album "Binary". We are halfway through that album, because I want to listen to it, and I want you to listen to it, and it's my show, ha! We also heard "First Day", and "Why Is Dad So Mad"? We also heard the title track, "Binary", and "Welcome Back: Geography Quiz". Alright, this is Radioactive Kids. I hope you're enjoying the show so far. I'm just doing whatever I want on today's show, because I did not have time, nor capacity, to put a show together this week. And I'm just playing a bunch of stuff that is fun. This next song on "Binary", by The Board of Edu... "Binary" by The Board of Education is called "Three", on Radioactive Kids. You are friends with her, who's friends with her, who's friends with you. And when you're all together, there's nothing you can't do. One can be the monster, and two can scream and flee. Two can seek the hider, and three can fill the swings. But sometimes, nothing can be harder than three. When two want to do one thing, and the third doesn't agree. And it's hard to be the one outside the two. To watch them have each other, and to wonder when you'll be free again. And the parents and teachers have ideas for how to play with others, or even on your own. But they don't know the power of a trio. Just a little more cooperation, just a little more patience. Well, it's not really your thing, but you still try again. One to be the customer, and one to take the order. A third to cook the food in the kitchen beneath a jungle gym. Three to raise the pirate flag atop the climbing tower. But only one to feel left out. Sometimes, nothing can be harder than three. When two want to do one thing, and the third doesn't agree. And it's hard to be the one outside the two. To watch them have each other, and to wonder to try and make a game up on your own. To watch them having so much fun and wonder when you will be free again. Down on the ocean floor, where sunlight never reaches. The haydopelagic layer, my solo submersible. Glides between the two worms and anglerfish. I'm sorry, but I'm not here right now. I'm out the classroom window sailing around the world. No, I don't have my homework and all the tasks. But I'll be sure to check it out when I get back. Climbing volcano wall beside of Mom's Olympus. As big as Arizona, sifting the Martian sediment. Four sides of ancient oceans and alien life. Deep in the Amazon, ziplining through the branches of the emergent layer, tracking an ossa-lot. Been watching out for Jaguar and Anaconda. I'm sorry, but I'm not here right now. I'm out the classroom window sailing around the globe. I didn't hear the question or do the task. But I'll be sure to check it out when I get back. Why, oh why, am I stuck here all the time? Forced to learn about the world on pages and computer screens. Why, oh why, do I spend all my days an aquarium resident staring out the glass? Why, oh why, can't school be an all-in-one? Icebreaker-submerging jet-powered hovercraft. Staff with scientists and that guy whose name is Bear. With backup rocket boosters and freeze-dried snacks. All I wanna do is get out there. I'm sorry that I'm not here right now. I'm out the classroom window sailing around the globe. Didn't hear the question or do the task. But I'll be sure to check it out when I get back. Propelling down a glacier. Speed something in a lover too. Perfecting my warp drive. Relaxing on Titan. There have been an awful lot of people throughout the past who invented really important things. But they don't get enough credit for it's a shame, and you know. There was one woman in particular, who I bet you don't even know. But without her, there'd be so much less adventure. Action and danger. She had a strong tunnel on the Allegheny. You can thank her for a mile and near five times the strength of steel. Kevlar, Kevlar is awesome. Kevlar, Kevlar is awesome. Anyone invented Kevlar, I bet you don't know. And when you ride your bike or slip on your chaps, strap on your skis or slam on your rapet. When you took on your paraglottisuspension, lights were using polyparaphenylene, parathalamic. It is so awesome. Kevlar, it is so very cool. Anyone invented Kevlar, I bet you don't know. Who's that lady, man? Synthesizer to my nomads. Who's that lady, man? Used in drumheads and body-oh. Used in drumheads and body on. You ready to begin? Yeah. Right. Keep that pedal on, I'm tired of catching. Go with it. Do we go? Now. Two. Three. All right, please, darling. Please, darling, right now. Please, darling, right now. Please, darling, right now. Come on. Who's that lady, babe? When your cat's talking through our water. Who's that lady, babe? When your recent cause burning rubber. Now it's time you should know. My name is Stephanie. Stephanie Colek. Stephanie invented Kevlar. Her own 17 patents. And that makes her so awesome. She was inducted into the National Inventors Hall of Fame. We had a classroom fish. We named him Rotochouch. Purple with heavy fins. In his glass bowl looking out. Oh, Rotochouch, I hear you've gone. Gonna die. Oh, little fish, I miss your big fishy eyes. He left her on a ledge. He never moved that much. Wanted to stare in contact. Made yellow flakes for lunch. Oh, Rotochouch, where will you go? Now that you've died. Will you just get flushed? Or will you fly up in the sky? We had a classroom fish. Today we got a brand-new fish. Blue and green with orange fins. Tomorrow we'll decide what to name her.
Well, here we are. It's the end of the record. I think we got to everything. I wonder if there's anything else we should touch on? Let me check my notes here. Oh, yeah.
Salsa. Salsa is awesome.
We can't let the record end without mentioning salsa. Stuff is so good. What else is there?
Amoebas. Amoebas are awesome.
I mean, think about that. The whole animal is a single cell. It's ridiculous.
And what about vibrations? Vibrations are awesome.
You know, like wavelengths, sound. That stuff is amazing. What else we got here?
Ooh, neutrinos. Neutrinos are so very awesome.
That's gotta be everything, right? No, wait. Snail shells, that's another one. Snail shells are awesome. It's like they're carrying an entire RV on their back. That is amazing. Aw, man. We could go on and on and on. Weather patterns. Cookie dough. There are just so many things. Well, we should probably wrap it up.
We are the Board of Education. Thank you for coming to the show.
Seriously, thank you.
Have a safe drive home. We hope you like what you heard.
Where do we end this thing? I know. How about we end it right where we started? Nice. And there you have it. That was the full album, "Binary", by the Board of Education. That song was called "Other Things That Are Awesome". Before that, we heard the ballad of Rotochouch, "Know Your Inventors", Part II, "I'm Not Here Right Now", and "Three" on Radioactive Kids. We're playing whatever we want today, so let's keep the music rolling. This is a song by Pierce Freelon from his album Black to the Future. It's called "Solar Skate".
So what's it gonna be, huh? We got the whole galaxy to ourselves. Yeah, I got an idea.
It's Saturday and I know what you wanna do. Call up all your friends and tell them meet you at the booth.
I don't really wanna swim today.
How about the zoo? I bring my fanny pack and play the game. Maybe we can go and hit the trampolines. Hit the aquarium, see a manatee. Go and grab some clothes off a mannequin. We did an activity, girl, I'm panicking. Let's roll. Round and round until the night time. Round and round. Cause I got real friends all around. Hold me down, down. Through all my hard times. Round and round. Feel the right vibe. Round and round. Cause I got real friends all around. Hold me down, down. Get you rolling. Soaring through the sky with you tonight. Let's go, let's go. Solar skating. Solar skate. The wheels are spinning fast, I'm getting high. Let's go, solar skating. Solar skate. The solar skating. Go solar, 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 solar skate.
Hey, hey, really don't bother your age. You can lace up, skate up into Brooklyn.
Helmets, knee pads, knee daddies. So fast, skate all the streets daddy.
Leaving quarantine is like a fantasy. Me without my skates is a calamity. This is how I try to keep my sanity. Walking with the homies and the family.
Come on, we'll be lying around. Until the night time. Down and round. Cause I got real friends all around. Hold me down, down. Hold me down, baby. Through all my hard times. Round and round. Feel the right vibe. Round and round. Cause I got real friends all around. Hold me down, down. Yeah, baby, let's go. Soaring through the sky with you tonight. Let's go, let's go. Solar skating. Solar skate. The wheels are spinning fast, I'm getting high. Let's go, solar skating. Solar skate. The solar skating. Go solar, 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 solar skate.
You are listening to Asheville FM, WSFM LP, 103.3 Asheville.
Once upon a time in a cosmic pasture, a flock of sheep found each other. They helped each other to love shine and wonder seeing truest colors. Good times, son of the son of count the stories to one up. You see, the one thing they could vibe on was not pining in. They took an L being different, flipped it into a B. If you black sheep, then you can join our squad. When we meet up in the clouds, we go ba, ba, ba. Black sheep, black sheep, black sheep. It's a vibe, y'all. Ba, ba, black sheep. Running wild, y'all. Man deep, I'm taking worldwide, y'all. We all love it, just a vibe, 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 vibe. You know we rolling mad deep. Our little family of black sheep. Ba, ba, ba. You know we rolling mad deep. Our little family of black sheep. I can see that you're different. Is that why you're so distant? You used to funny looks. While those looks you don't be missing. Can I listen? I relate. Got the same dish on my plate. Is it harder tall enough? You couldn't try to look away? So we should stick together through and through. But I admit that ain't no black sheep can admit. A black sheep club? So preposterous. That might just be the blackest sheep thing ever. We the awesome men. Ba, ba, goes a black sheep. Ba, ba, goes a black sheep. Ba, ba, goes a black sheep. Pure mystique with my lamb bam bam speak. Hey, little diddle, got that cat with its fiddle. Talking diddle boy blue and a cow jumping the moon. Shout out little Miss Muffet chilling out on her tuff. It's my black sheep vibrations. Count them in consolation. Singing twinkle, twinkle, little sheep. Soft and thin, little feet. Black as wool, glittered feet. Pouncing across the starry sea. One love of all day. Angels make a big wave. So fly with your black sheep emerald. Spread love in your own way. Celebrate sheep. Attention all lost little lambs. If you feeling out of place, need a break, can't relate. Come join the black sheep squad. All are welcome. I'll see y'all out there on the cosmic pastures. Vibing. You know we rolling mad deep. Our little family of black sheep. You know we rolling mad deep. Our little family of black sheep.
How are you guys doing? So what's your first year at Hogwarts? Welcome. You probably have a lot of questions. Well, I'm Swell Ralph. I will be your guide today. Taking a little journey. Let's go.
Welcome to Hogwarts, I limit your ears. First years are coming, the timing is here. Worried by friends, I tell you it clear. You finding your house and you finding your peers. Slithering, huffle puff, raven claw, or griffin door. You wanna know about your house? Yo, that sorting hat will tell you more. Okay, dope ass, that time of year with a family swarm to the Hogwarts Express on the 93 quarters platform. Journey into Hogwarts School of Whiffcraft and Wizardry. You wanna know this skinny heart? Then go ahead and just stick with me. Hit all the vendors and get you a wand. Butterbit, baby, I thought you I'm fine. It's a fresh year, so you better put on. Chalk and frost, oh baby, yeah, they the bomb. Hit my lumps and get you that out. Want more snacks to stay on the prowl? That's Hogwarts meeting this diagonal alley. Oh, there's one more thing I should tell you about. Nocturne Alley, stay away from that. Nocturne Alley, you don't wanna do that. It's a dark wilderness and a dark magic. You run into the alley, then turn right back. Stay away from the forbidden forest. Everyone will say it, listen to the chorus. Gringos bank, if you wanna check your riches. Let's get hyped now. I'm always a wizard and a witcher. Welcome to Hogwarts, I limit your ears. First years are coming, the timing is here. Worried by friends, I tell you it clear. You finding your house and you finding your peers. Slithering, huffle puff, raven claw, or griffin door. You wanna know about your house? Yo, that sorting hat will tell you more. Welcome to Hogwarts, I limit your ears. First years are coming, the timing is here. Worried by friends, I tell you it clear. You finding your house and you finding your peers. Slithering, huffle puff, raven claw, or griffin door. You wanna know about your house? Yo, that sorting hat will tell you more. That sorting hat, let's speak on that. It'll choose your house, it'll be exact. It'll make mistakes, so the stakes are great. Yo, hustle like a family, that's a fact. These are things you should not ignore. I'm a resource, I got tips galore. Pay attention to your boy and you will soar. Know about them houses, let me tell you more. Slithering coming, ambitions incumbent. And for the top spot, you know that they got it. Hufflepuff, they are hardworking and patient. And they be so loyal, they don't get complacent. Ravenclaw, they are so smart, yeah, they learning. They headed, they buzzing, it's dollars they earning. Griffin door full of that courage, they brave. If you was in trouble, they probably come save. Keep your nose clean and stay out of trouble. Got one more thing, don't make it no struggle. Learn your spells and practice your magic, but don't you do it in front of no mother. Lot of info, is your head feeling coral? Grab your wands and give it a whirl. It's the wonderful, 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 wonderful wizarding, wizarding world. Welcome to Hogwarts, I limit your ears. First years are coming, the timing is here. Worried by friends, I tell you it clear. You finding your house and you finding your peers. Slithering, huffle puff, raven claw, or griffin door. You wanna know about your house? Yo, that sorting hat will tell you more. Welcome to Hogwarts, I limit your ears. First years are coming, the timing is here. Worried by friends, I tell you it clear. You finding your house and you finding your peers. Slithering, huffle puff, raven claw, or griffin door. You wanna know about your house? Yo, that sorting hat will tell you more.
All right. Hope you enjoyed your little information session here. You guys go on, be great, be great, do great things. Be a great little wizards and witches. I'll see you. I'll be around.
My people, it's time to slip on your fancy gold lame spanx pants is right now.
West door.
D-I-S-C-O. She's a disco crazy mama. Roll that disco up in your minivan. D-I-S-C-O. She's a disco crazy mama. Roll that disco up in your minivan.
Disco, disco, slick like Crisco. Hot off the frying pan, biscuit, let's go. Mama likes pancakes, spin them like a disco. Picking turntables, let the mad hips flow. Pucky mama with the minivan, bump a that boom, boom, boom right at the blue tube, blue box. Look at the moon, she like zoom, zoom, zoom. Mama can't says bill, cause the music's too hot. Dancing, washing, multitasking, greasy dishes, laundry baskets, dirty diapers, crooked batches, platform shoes and sequin jackets. A little carpool caviar, key action. The little ways to make the most of traffic. This mama, she be disco dashing all the way through the day, baby, that's what's happening.
She's a disco dancing mama, y'all. And she bringing disco back everywhere she goes. To the bank, to the grocery store. Picking kids up from school. She be getting a groove on and she looking fly, doing it too.
D-I-S-C-O. She's a disco crazy mama. Roll that disco up in your minivan. D-I-S-C-O. She's a disco crazy mama. Roll that disco up in your minivan.
I'm a tunnel on the radio. Play the songs that I love and know. When I start to feel the beat. I got my hands on a movie.
Give me the gold.
Go mama, go mama, go mama.
Strawberry sun. Go, 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 go. Disco, disco, dance. Disco, dance. Oh, no.
Roll that disco up in your minivan. Roll that disco up in your minivan. Roll that disco up in your minivan. Minivan, minivan, minivan. Roll that disco up in your minivan. Roll that disco up in your minivan. Roll that disco up in your minivan. Minivan, minivan, minivan.
She's a mother like no other. Taking care of all your brothers and sisters since they was babies. She's amazing on the daily. But she, she got this disco itch, I should. I say she got a disco gift. Cause when that disco balls are calling, she gets that disco party started.
Disco, disco dancing. Disco, disco dancing. Disco, disco dancing. Oh, no. Disco, disco dance. I will do the disco. Disco, disco dance. Mama did the disco.
The house of black was a palace once. Now I'm trapped making lunch for this mud-blood Brady Bunch. I'm just trying to maintain, yeah. Twelve grandma place. Black family name. Got Harry Potter, Order of the Phoenix Squatters up in my face. Serious black back. Acting like he owns the place. Welcome to the house of black. Go ahead, make yourself at home and relax. Let me get your jacket, I'll help you unpack this. While I'm at it, I'll fix you a bath quick. If you need anything, just please ask it. Wait, I think I forgot your gift basket. If you haven't noticed, I'm sarcastic. Now hit the road, Jack, or you're leaving in a casket.
What right have you to drive us out? What right? Let me show you.
Just when you thought it was safe to break into my place and take everything but the drapes. Don't expect me to bake you a cake or smile on your face when I'm so full of hate.
Don't expect me to bake you a cake or smile on your face when I'm so full of hate. It's my house, my rules, I win, you lose. You need to move out to find your shoes. And if you crying about being abused, it's old news. It's a story of my life, I got the scars to prove. I'm not the host with the most, got the least in fact. I'm like a ghost who floats like insomniacs. I see regulars black in dreams and flashbacks and I scream out loud, cause I think that he's back. But the fact is that serious black is my master. That backstabbing grand from Aska Band with the master plan, with the Order of the Phoenix hand in hand. Know it's a little bit presumptuous to show up to a house and just rummage it, yo. So I'mma do like Umbridge did and just lay down the law for these crummy kids. Here we go. First rule, just leave things where you see them. Act like the House of Black was a museum. Second rule, shut up, put your hands high up, so I know you're not stealing my stuff. The dishes in the kitchen and the pictures of witches and wizards, don't touch that. Stacks of old books and folded maps, the mold that's grown in the cracks, don't touch that. Docksees and the curtains, don't hurt them. Be polite to the spiders, don't touch that. The black family tapestry, cabinets that are packed to capacity, don't touch that. The dishes in the kitchen and the pictures of witches and wizards, don't touch that. Stacks of old books and folded maps, the mold that's grown in the cracks, don't touch that. Docksees and the curtains, don't hurt them. Be polite to the spiders, don't touch that. The black family tapestry, cabinets that are packed to capacity, don't touch that.
So step up if you wanna get hurt.
I'm not trying to be inhospitable, but I'll admit I'm just a little irritable. I've hit my limit, you kids got me miserable. I'm not religious, but I'm praying for a miracle, or maybe Tom Riddle will hit you with an unforgivable curse that leaves you in the care of a nurse in a world of hurt, covered in dirt, crying out for your mother or worse, trying to hail a hearse. I'm done being gracious, I'm losing my patience. Y'all didn't even call to make reservations. I'll pay you to take a vacation, a one-way ticket to faraway destinations. The dishes in the kitchen and the pictures of witches and wizards, don't touch that. Stacks of old books and folded maps, the mold that's grown in the cracks, don't touch that. Docksees and the curtains, don't hurt them. Be polite to the spiders, don't touch that. The black family tapestry, cabinets that are packed to capacity, don't touch that. The dishes in the kitchen and the pictures of witches and wizards, don't touch that. Stacks of old books and folded maps, the mold that's grown in the cracks, don't touch that. Docksees and the curtains, don't hurt them. Be polite to the spiders, don't touch that. The black family tapestry, cabinets that are packed to capacity, don't touch that.
That was your wizard rock of the week. "Don't Touch That" by MC Creature from the EP Alone in the Dark on Radioactive Kids. Before that, we heard Fancy Pants featuring Mr. Cookie Jar, the song called Disco Dancing Mama. And we heard another song, uh, another wizard rock song by Swell Rel, excuse me, Swell Rel, called Hogwarts 101. Welcome to Hogwarts from the EP Potter Pack. And we heard a single by Mr. Cookie Jar called Black Sheep Club. And started that set off with Solar Skate by Pierce Freelon from his album Black to the Future on Radioactive Kids. Alright folks, so, um, we've been playing several songs. We've actually played two or three songs this year from the album Trees by Molly Ledford and Billy Kelly. And I just realized, it's been a long, long time since we played the entire album on the show. And it is a really, really good album. So, you know what? I'm gonna do it right now, presenting for your listening enjoyment, the entirety of Trees by Molly Ledford and Billy Kelly. The song is the title track. And I'm sure you can guess what the album is about.
Bursting forth with leaves, swaying in the gentle summer breeze.
Woody plant, standing taller than thirteen feet. Fibers in her wood with an outer covering. Call bark, leaves that match. You batch your food from sunlight to a processed known as photosynthesis. Let's make time today to lie down in the shade beneath the trees. Single trunk, whose diameter is at least three inches at a height of four and a half feet. Crown of holy edge that might stay evergreen or might change color. Fall off at times. Let's make time today to lie down in the shade beneath the trees. Let's make time today to lie down in the shade beneath the trees.
Let's go to the woods, maybe just a little farther than we should. We'll be back by dinner. I found a trail, I think we better follow it. Let's go to the woods, ride our bikes up to the lot where nothing stood. Past the branches where the world opens up. Yeah, it's another night, yeah. When we go to the woods, we'll be on our own. When we go to the woods, we can live by our own code. Get your pocket knife, bet there's something on there you have never tried. Got my compass and my Henry Davis robe. Yeah, I'm so ready to go. When we go to the woods, I feel more alive. When we go to the woods, it's up to us if we survive. Ducking under every spider web, footsteps crunching in the leaves. Clever enough to walk along a log, nature's balance beam. Who do these woods belong to? I don't know, the woods they should be free. Or the property of animals, oh, the property of trees, the property of trees. Let's go to the woods. 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 Let's go to the woods.
Ready?
Yep.
Good.
Walking round town, walking down my street. Right here on the ground, lying at my feet, I found a stick.
It's a stick, it's a stick.
Found a plain old stick.
Just a dumb old stick.
Well, I picked it up with my hands. Ain't nobody gonna tell me I can't. It's just a stick. Branch was growing nice and strong. Ain't nobody knowing why the branch fell off, now it's a stick.
It's a stick, it's a stick.
The former branch is a stick.
Just a dumb old stick.
Take as many of them as you please. As a matter of fact, they do grow on trees, it's just a stick. Alright! Put on your hiking boots and pull up your socks. Get yourself a stick and going out for a walk with a stick.
It's a stick, it's a stick.
With the walking stick.
Just a dumb old stick.
I myself would never understand, why is it easier to walk with a stick in your hand? It's just a stick. Put it in the water, see if it'll float. Pretending all you want of that, it is a boat, but it's a stick.
It's a stick, it's a stick.
It's just a floating stick.
Just a dumb old stick.
Watch it sail away until it's gone. It's like a zillion more than that came from, oh, I mean, it's just a stick. Ooh, ooh, alright! Throw it in the air, see if you can catch it. Toss it to the dog, see if she will fetch it, it's a stick.
It's a stick, it's a stick.
It's a fetching stick.
Just a dumb old stick.
Well, that's the end of this hero's song. It's already gone on for way too long. It's just a stick. Ooh, it's brown and sticky. A brown stick. Ooh, ooh, ha, ha, ha.
In my life, I'm finding acorns. You know like a five, you washed and dried. Who knows how many times checking my pockets, finding acorns. A fluttering thought, I guess I caught. And just as quickly, I forgot. A little note I wrote to myself. Oh, it might as well be a note from somebody else. In my world, I'm finding acorns. A bubble gum pile, I hid for a while. After all, that fried pink ice cream was long gone. On scraps of paper, finding acorns. I gather them all, whenever they fall. You never know when one will grow into a song, a melody into my phone at night. By the porch light, one day we're bound to reunite. They say you can count on acorns raining down. There's a mystery to their numbers. But last year was a masked year, so I've got a stash to tie me. I hide and then I seek, keeping my eyes peeled for acorns. Remembering that miniature hats rest upon the stuff that grows into a tree. My favorite season brings me acorns. So I'm gonna let them fall on my head. And when they hit, I'll shout Eureka! Am I the squirrel or am I the tree? I can't wait to see what will these acorns mean for me.
Coniferous trees, as you might have known. Reproduced by growing little seeds inside of a cone. Coniferous trees grow around the world. And the tallest living thing on the earth is a coniferous tree.
Case you're curious, Molly, uh, that's a coast redwood or a sequoia tree. It's growing out there in California, USA.
Hey, thanks for the information.
You're welcome, you're welcome. It is three hundred seventy-nine feet tall.
That's not bad.
Yeah, it's tall.
Coniferous trees.
Coniferous trees.
So some folks believe.
I've seen those people.
Don't have leaves because they have needles, but guess what? Their needles are actually leaves.
It's just a different kind of leaf.
Coniferous trees grow around the world. And the oldest living thing on the earth is a coniferous tree.
And what is that?
Well, a tree, it's like a big woody plant, like.
No, I mean like.
Oh, the oldest thing, the oldest thing is a bristlecone pine tree that's growing out there in California. It's over four thousand eight hundred years old.
You checked out a book on California, didn't you?
Coniferous trees.
Coniferous trees.
I just got that.
Nicknamed evergreen.
They don't eat meat, do they?
No, those coniferous trees. On account of their tendency year round to keep their leaves. See, I told you they have leaves.
Coniferous trees grow around the world. And if you ask me, one of the coolest kinda trees on the earth is a coniferous tree.
Angel oak, I'm not allowed to climb you. Angel oak, there are park rangers around. Angel oak, I've always wished to climb a tree. And I see the way you lay your branches down. Wish I could wander up the ramp of you and look down. I'd love to stroll on up your branches, but it's not allowed. It's fair and square, I'd never dare to lean on you. Don't have to tell me that I'm not above the law. Unlike the birds, unlike the squirrels, they pass right through. There are advantages to being wild and small. If I could follow the same path they do along your bowels. I'd hold my arms straight out for balance, they'd never get me down. Back to the ground. But you're a famous tree, a tree that has a name. And a postcard and a gate. So I'll stay far enough away, the brittle rules will never break. But close enough to dream while I'm awake. Oh, angel oak. Angel oak.
In the world before the dino source. Centimeters tall they stand. By the rivers, lakes, and ocean shores. Plants, the early plants. Later on, before the dino source. Growing taller by degrees. With their woody stems now for support. Trees, the early trees. Here come the trees, they come. They come to take over the world. They come in peace. Here come the trees. Later still before the dinosaurs, spreading out with greater speed, faster than they ever could with spores. Seeds, the world's first seeds. Here come the trees. They come to take over the world. They come in peace. Here come the trees.
Since their appearance on earth over 390 million years ago, trees have evolved and endured through dramatic climate changes and mass extinctions. Surviving, thriving, and spreading across the emerging supercontinent Pangaea. They colonized the land with great forests, and it was still some 100 million years before the first appearance of the dinosaurs.
In the world before the dinosaurs, massive forests fanning out. Lycopods, calamites, and conifers. Now, their time is now. Here come the trees. They come to take over the world. Here come the trees across the supercontinent. Nothing's stopping them now. Here come the trees. They come to take over the world. They come in peace. Here come the trees.
That was Billy Kelly and Molly Ledford with a song called "Here Come the Trees" from their fantastic album Trees, which is all about trees. What a surprise. We are halfway through that album. We have seven more songs to go. We also heard in that set Angel Oak, Coniferous Trees, Acorns, It's Just a Dumb Old Stick, To the Woods, and the title track Trees. I am Sagan. This is Radioactive Kids. We are doing whatever we want on today's show. I hope you're enjoying it so far. Let's keep the music rolling with Two Trees: Old Friends on Radioactive Kids.
Two trees that grew up together. Two trees that lean on each other like old friends. Like old friends. Two trees so close, they almost look like one. Two trees, the squirrels so easily jump from one to the other. Two trees in love at the top of my yard. I got the love inside, and they're standing guard. Two trees that grew up together. My neighbor calls them the lovers. They remind me of two giraffes with an accent wine. I hear their music on a windy night. Their branches swaying at the top of them pines. I listen to the timbre of their timber keeping time. Two trees in love at the top of the hill. You can lean on me, and I know you will. Two trees in love seems like a good sign, as long as I'm yours, as long as you're mine.
Sturdy, reliable, and strong, withstanding all that comes along. Majestic, resolute, and proud, beneath a crown of mighty boughs. Steadfast and dignified. It's easy to see why the national tree of England is the oak. The national tree of Ireland is the oak. The national tree of Baltimore is the oak. Symbolic, stately, and sublime, unyielding through the test of time. Commemorating storied past and persevering to the last. History liquefied. It's easy to see why the national tree of Serbia is the oak. The national tree of Cyprus is the oak. The national tree of Poland is the oak. The national tree of Estonia is the oak. The national tree of Germany is the oak. The national tree of Latvia is the oak. The national tree of Wales is the oak. The national tree of Bulgaria is the oak. The national tree of Romania is the oak. The national tree of France is the oak. The national tree of Lithuania is the oak. The national tree of the United States is the oak.
Meet you by the roots of the tree with my blue Lamborghini. It's the one that you let me have. There must be something wrong with it. By the roots of the tree with my blue Lamborghini, it's the only one I ever had. And I'm still hanging on to it. Rolling our cars, looking for a place to park. That's all we do, parking cars on roads. Sitting in the sand in the shade. Oh, it feels far away. The kids over on the swings sound like seagulls on the wind. Reverend hours spent in a magical place. I hope you don't mind me lots. You did give me a matchbox. I know these roots stretched beneath us underground. Almost touching the next tree. They are family, even if they don't make a sound. Da da da, da 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 da. Still have my car. Sand all in the tires. Won't roll anywhere, but it takes me right back to there. It takes me right back to you. Meet you over by the roots. Da da da, da 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 da.
Take a look with me at this plant we call the tree. It's standing taller than all them other plants. Makes you wonder how to get so big. How can it stand tall and yet still be flexible enough to sway and bend in the wind? 'Cause if it wasn't, it would break and fall. Who's been supporting trees as long as trees have stood? Who could? I would.
He's wood.
That's me. Now let's take a peek at the inside of the tree. How does the water move from the roots to the leaves up in a canopy? I'll take it on up through millions of microscopic tubes in a tissue called xylem. And you'll find it in every tree from here to Timbuktu. Who's making sure that xylem's working like it should? Who could? I would. Strictly speaking, I'm a strong and fibrous tissue found in certain plants, roots and stems. I lend support and I help transport important water, food, and nutrients. Where was I? Oh, yeah, leaves. The leaves, they get supplied with water, carbon dioxide, and sunlight, which they take and use to make, which is to say they photosynthesize. But the food up in the leaves is meant to feed the entire tree. So flowum takes it down, spreads it all around. And flowum's just another part of me. Who's rolling with the flowum delivering that glue? Who could? I would. Strictly speaking, I'm a strong and fibrous tissue found in certain plants, roots and stems. But every chance you take a second glance, you quickly come to understand that I'm the best. I could talk about my many fine qualities all day, but I would not want to bore you. I kid, I kid around, but really, this is a serious business. You know, I gotta, I gotta hold them trees up. Why, I'm used as a building material. All through human history, houses, boats. You can make paper out of me. Abraham Lincoln's log cabin, ever hear that? That was me. I invented the splinter. You ever been to the woods? That's some of my best work, I feel. I'm quite proud of it. Listen, I gotta go, man. Somewhere out there, there's a, there's a five-year-old needs a splinter.
Count your rings, now I can. Where you were, where I'm standing. Chase your life with my hands. Count your rings. All your records we can spin. All the history hidden in it. It all begins, it all begins with your rings. See the light. You grew faster every spring, every spring. See the dark, slow summer wood the late season would bring. Strains for the sun to warm my head. Where I'm used to shade and branches, where the birds first had the chance to use their wings. Every nest in your canopy. Every picnic at your feet. Filled the air with something sweet, so we should sing. We all loved your tree. We will miss your tree. There's no mystery to your age, now we can see. Reading of flood and fire in your diary. A year without summer back in 1816. A history written straight into Cambium and published by the falling of a tree. I've got something big to say, welling in my heart today, so I will stand upon the place you used to be. May I draw upon the height? How you towered at the sight, upon the grandeur, the sublime nobility. We all loved your tree. We will miss your tree. We all loved your tree. We will miss your tree.
Rest in power, Steve. We love you.
One time, my friend and I were walking in the forest when before us there appeared a certain kind of tree that we had never seen. She said, "I wonder what it is." I said, "I wonder what it is." She said, "Perhaps we should use this." I said, "What's this?" She said, "Oh, this is the dichotomous key." I said, "What's that?" And she said, "The dichotomous key will ask us questions. Where the answer's always one of two options that we must choose between. It is a scientific system that has been designed to simplify identifying any kind of tree, or plant, or rock, or really anything." And so my friend, she had this book. We took a look inside the book, where it had asked a lot of questions about the tree that we had seen. Like, does the tree bear cones and have leaves that are needle-like and thin?
Oh, would we say that the leaves are running flat and stuff like that to the dichotomous key?
I said, "But why?" And she said, "The dichotomous key is asking questions. Where the answer's always one of two options that we must choose between. It is a scientific system that has been designed to simplify identifying any kind of tree, or plant, or rock, or really anything." Why process of elimination? As we continued to discard the options that we had decided just did not apply to this peculiar tree that we had seen. We quickly came to understand that we were standing by a specimen of a tree called Sapphilya trifoliya. Thankfully, we had dichotomous key. I said, "Oh, cool." And we said, "The dichotomous key kept asking questions. Where the answer's always one of two options that we must choose between. It is a scientific system that has been designed to simplify identifying any kind of tree, or plant, or rock, or really anything."
I'm standing by you, sapling. This is where you get to grow. I'm standing by you, sapling. In the very spot you chose. I'm standing by you, sapling. No one's gonna cut you down when I'm around. I'll leave your branches low, perfect as they are. One day, you might become a ladder to the stars. Take all the time you want, 'cause no one's gonna cut you down when I'm around. Nobody planned on you, but here you are changing my landscape. Some say I let this go too far, but when I listen to the birds and to my heart, they favor you. But when I listen to the birds and to my heart, they favor you. I'm standing by you sapling. Taking a picture of us both I can look back on. When you've grown past me, you know I want that to happen. Wanna stand there smiling up, up, up at you. Nobody planned on you. And that's the fun change in my landscape. Lean into the sun, new leaves are turning. And no one's gonna cut you down when I'm around. When I'm around. I'm standing by you sapling.
And there you have it. That was the final track on the amazing album Trees by Molly Ledford and Billy Kelly. That was called Standing By You Sapling. Before that, we heard the Dichotomous Key. We also heard Count Your Rings, I Would, Meet You By The Roots, The National Tree of England, and Two Trees: Old Friends on Radioactive Kids. Hope you enjoyed hearing the entire album, cause it is a really good album. And I just wanted to play it, to let y'all hear it. Thank you so much for listening to this very random episode of Radioactive Kids. I hope you had fun going along with me for the ride. I certainly had a great time on the radio. As I mentioned at the top of the show, I did not have capacity to put together a new episode this week Because one of my closest friends and comrades died last weekend. And yeah, it's been rough. But I am glad I got to spend this time with y'all on the radio. Thank you for listening, and I mean it. All right, folks, if you're listening to Asheville FM, stay tuned for Lynette de Voces. And if you're listening elsewhere, stay tuned for whatever else is coming up next. Let's finish off with a very random thing by The Monkey Bunch From their album Power To The Little People. The song is called Studio Brew on Radioactive Kids. Thank you, thank you so much for listening. I am Sagan, and as always, I will see you on the radio next week.
You're listening to Studio Brew on TEA Radio. Now, Cream and Sugar with the Weather and Traffic.
Well, we're looking at a clear day in the kitchen with a consistent 20 degrees And absolutely no chance of showers. Over to Sugar now for the traffic. Thanks, Cream. Well, no collisions to report this morning. Traffic has eased off a bit after the breakfast rush. But we are expecting a slowdown in the fridge lane for lunch. Now, back to your host, Earl Grey.
Thanks, Sugar. And we're back with our guest musician and this year's Stir It Up Award winner, Kettle.
So good to be here, Earl.
Now, this album is a real departure from your debut outing, Kettle. Still steeping. Tell us about this new direction. You're working with a different producer on this one?
Yes, I used to work with Instant Coffee, but he just couldn't focus. And then I met Pico, who really understood what I was going for.
Can we get a little taste of what you've been working on?
Maybe not a taste, but we'd love to play something for you.
Okay, on Studio Brew on TEA Radio and a very serious satellite, here is Kettle.
No one really knows what it's like. Being full of boiling water on your life. All my mornings always start the same. Wondering if anyone will know my name, my name. I'm a little teapot, short and stout. Here is my handle. Here is my spout. When I get all steamed up, hear me shout. Tip me over and pour me out. Pour me out. I've been thinking about how life works. How the cookie crumbles and the perks. But I'll do my best, I'll be okay. Making tea for people's always been my way, my way, my way. I'm a little teapot, short and stout. Here is my handle. And here is my spout. When I get all steamed up, hear me shout. Tip me over, tip me over. We tip me over. Pour me out, pour me out. Pour me out, pour me out. Pour me out, pour me out. Pour me out, pour me out.
That was hot. So what's next for you?
You know how it is. The kitchen can be pretty tough. I mean, most of the spoons are incredibly, incredibly supportive. But at the end of the day, well, it's night and I can get pretty tired.
Right, right.